Seven o'clock. Let's go ahead and call me in order. Please stand for invocation. Bobby Campbell? If you can.
Father God, we thank you for this day. God, we thank you for continuing to bless us and keep us. We ask you, Lord, to continue to bless our city. Watch over us, Lord. Help us to be the persons you would have us to be. I ask you, God, to please continue to be with all of our city officials, our mayor, council persons that are here, God. We ask you for all of our staff persons that work for this city, and also our first responders. Be with them and watch over them, God. I ask you, Lord, to be with every person that's present here tonight. Watch over them, be with their families, keep your hedge protection around them, God. We thank you, God, for them being responsible and caring and accountable to come to the city council meetings, to find out what's going on with our city, and to help to understand and watch over and make sure things are going properly. God, we ask you to please be with the homeless, those that are in need. God, we always want to pray for the least, the last, and the lost. We ask you, Lord, to continue to watch over them, and also, God, continue, Lord, to bless us to be a loving city and a caring city in this time of cold and weather. And we thank you, God, for all the people who continue to do what they do to help those persons who don't have a warm place to go. I ask you, Lord, in the name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion, please.
Yes. Councilperson Maples.
Here.
Councilperson Gill.
Here.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Here.
Councilperson Stovny.
Here.
Councilperson Owen.
Here.
Councilperson Ellis.
Here.
Councilperson Samuel.
Here.
Let the record reflect, seven council members present, two absent.
Minutes to be approved. Regular minutes of January 22nd.
Motion to approve.
A motion of second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approve of the agenda.
No changes. Motion to approve.
Aye.
Motion of second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Claims to be approved.
I have a duplicate on page three. It needs to be taken off, under Finance Department, actually, for $165.
I have the new total. Do you have it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I have a few things up. Go ahead and get the new total.
Okay. It's $1,371,58.57.
I wanted to, Ed, if I may.
Yep.
She talked about the duplicate. It's a million three because we do have that transfer out, 500,000 from Edit for the, which we do every year, for sidewalks. And a good bulk of that, $303,958, is for our insurances. But I wanted you all to turn to, I want to bring something to your all's attention. Turn to page eight, please. Under the vehicle maintenance and fuel, where you see all those Makowski oils, the down to the last two, which is the 16,000 and 17,000, they were all for this year. All the other ones were from October, November, and all of December. So, and that total is $113,944.66. So, since we've been keeping an eye on fuel, I want to let you all know that we did have bills from last year that's now in this budget, so it might throw things a little off. And I did call and talk to Michael O'Brien, and it was because emails still went to the old department head by the time they got things switched over. So, I mean, he explained it all, and I did relay to him to continue to keep an eye on the fuel, and that he will, partly you now, since you give you quarterly reports, so we keep an eye on that fuel. But taking that $113,944 out from, it's supposed to be last year's budget into this year's budget, we may run shorter sooner than rather than later this year. So, I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. That's all I have. With that, if nobody has any questions, I'll make a motion to approve the adjusted total of $1,371,58.57.
Second.
A motion of second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Parks claims.
Parks are $61,966.04.
All claims in order?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to pass, the Park's claims for $61,966.04.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Court of the clerk.
At this time, I don't have anything, sir.
First up on the agenda for unfinished business, Sarah Green.
This is an ordinance that has been with the Planning Commission. It was initiated by the city councils several weeks ago, maybe two or three months ago, as a matter of fact. But statute requires that once it's initiated, a change or zoning code, and this was a change that's being proposed to deal with the regulating of certain types of animals, to amend the zoning code to deal with that, non-commercial livestock specifically. There's two ordinances that are dealing with that here. By law, you did the correct thing. You sent that to the Planning Commission, for the Planning Commission to conduct a public hearing, which the Planning Commission has done. They did conduct a public hearing, but they did not take any action at that time. They tabled it until April. The statute says that the only requirement that the Planning Commission has under those circumstances is to conduct a public hearing, which it did, but it also has to make a recommendation to you, but the statute doesn't say when they are to do that. It's silent right now. It's at the Planning Commission level and is going to stay there, I assume, until April, unless the Planning Commission takes it off the table. Before then, once it comes to you from the Planning Commission, either with a favorable recommendation, unfavorable, or no recommendation, then you have 90 days from the date of that recommendation to act upon the ordinance. So, as of right now, the ball is in the Planning Commission's court. Am I correct, Lisa?
That's correct.
That was the action that was taken at the last Planning Commission meeting.
So, no action is ever taken by Planning and Zoning? It never gets here?
The statute is silent. We'll probably have to address that at some point. If they don't take any action, I think you could obviously interpret it as them giving you a non or a no recommendation, so. But right now, they tabled it to a definite time, so I would say that it would be hard for me to construe that that means no recommendation, because they specifically said that they're going to take it back up in April. I think they're, I don't want to speak for the Planning Commission, because I think there was some, there was quite a bit of discussion, but there were some members on the Planning Commission that wanted to get more feedback from the public before acting upon it. Is that correct, Lisa?
Yeah, and we had the public hearing, which we were required by state statute to do, and there was nobody there to speak either way. Nobody spoke.
Was there a reason they pushed it back to April?
Good question.
Dustin just said that he-
I think initially it was May, and I think there was a-
Yeah, I tried my best, but Dustin just basically spoke and said that he needed time to talk to his constituents and get their feeling on the numbers and all that, that I said, "You had time to look at this," but he said, "That's the first time it came to planning." And I said, "It takes you that long to talk to your constituents?" And he said, "Yes." So, I know a couple of them talked about making amendment to it about if, like, right now, if you're, you know, if we pass it and they're allowed five and one dies, can they replace one that dies? And that was basically, trust me, it was a whole other conversation about that.
So, if they make a recommendation about the ordinance and it comes to us and we want to change it, then do we have to go back and forth on any changes we want to make?
Send it back to them.
I will continue to express my concern about this ordinance and establishing law about, how do I want to put this, specialized enforcement that's been brought up numerous times, that we're not worried about District Four and District Six, but we're passing law that is citywide. And individual enforcement and our singled-out enforcement is a direct violation of people's rights. And I will continue to say that about this ordinance. And the fact that nobody showed up to speak for or against it, there again goes to tell me that I think that it's a good need. So, does this stay on our agenda until April?
My recommendation is that it not be, I mean, obviously, it's the clerk's that's heard, she decides to do, but I don't think you can act on it until the Planning Commission acts on it, which is, the earliest is going to be April. So, they meet the last Tuesday, the last Tuesday of April.
So, would I make a motion to remove the ordinance from the table?
Remove it and put it back on in, I guess, May.
Until the Planning Commission-
In May or until the Planning Commission acts upon whichever occurs, whichever occurs first.
Just clarification. Number 10 talks about many of the ordinance, the zoning. We're not talking about that. We're talking about-
No, you're talking about number 10. But they're related, because if you do number 10, you don't need number nine.
But, okay, then, okay, we'll have to address number nine.
Number nine.
Either by table or-
Yeah, I mean, I think you would need to table both of them, because they're interrelated. I mean, if you recall, initially, this came to you as an amendment to the Animal Control Ordinance. Had not been known this for 22 years. At one time, it was in Animal Control Ordinance, and it was taken out. It's my opinion that if you're going to address it, instead of putting it in Animal Control Ordinance, it's better suited in your Land Use Control Ordinance, which is your zoning code. That's how most communities deal with this. And if you Google this, this is a, this is not that unusual of an issue that communities are dealing with, one way or the other.
Well, there was-
Whether they have tight controls, loose controls, or whatever, most communities have some type of regulation in place.
Well, there always was language in Planning and Zoning addressing the number of chickens and stuff, but it was removed when we thought everything was going to be combined in an ordinance, and since the ordinance didn't seem to take leniency of it, we're just going to put it, the language back in, Planning and Zoning with some language that was-
I just think-
Because you were going by other communities, what they did.
I just think from administrative, from administration standpoint, we just, we either need to know whether we have a regulation to deal with this or not, because we're the ones that get, you know, we got a phone call today to the mayor's office, and I know code enforcement, you know, gets complaints. And right now, we have nothing on the books, and if that's the way it's going to be, that's not, we just, we just need to know everything. It's sort of in limbo, so.
But we do have this ordinance on the books, correct?
We don't have, we don't have any-
Well, I'm sorry, the one that we passed the first year of our local council, I believe.
But it doesn't address any of these issues.
Okay.
It was taken out. And I believe it was taken out, because I think it, some people were under the impression that the zoning code dealt with it, and kind of found out the zoning code did not deal with it, so now we're trying to deal with it.
And you would, question, and you would like for us to resolve this? Is that-
One way or the other. I mean, if we're not going to, if we're not going to regulate non-commercial livestock within the city, I'm not going to give my personal opinion, we just, we just, we just need to know, because it's an issue that, you know, I mean, I'm not saying it's like the most pressing issue that we're dealing with, but I think if you spoke to our two code enforcement officers, it's, it's an issue I think they would like for you to deal with.
And animal control, too.
In animal control.
And the department head wants this, but is that correct or not correct, or?
I think code enforcement, which is under Planning and Zoning, I think they would like to have some type of regulation in place, because we get complaints.
Because I, the reason I'm asking, I haven't, I haven't gotten any frustrations either way for, "Oh, we need this, we don't need this." And so, I just kind of, if there's folks with the administration that say, "Yes, we need that," okay. If you say, you know, I don't, I'm kind of neutralized. I'm kind of neutralized.
My only opinion is, if you're going to address it, I think it's best to be addressed in your zoning code as opposed to your Animal Control Ordinance. It's, because it is a land use issue.
So, as far as the action on the council's part?
I think you would, I think you would remove it and table it, table this until the May meeting, both nine and 10 tabled until the May meeting, or until Planning Commission acts upon it, whichever occurs first.
So moved.
And it'll still appear on the agenda? Because of all tabled items, I'm just giving you a heads up. It'll appear. You don't have to do anything. I'll put on the side. No action till May.
Yeah. Second. Is this for number nine? Nine and 10. For nine. We have a motion of second. Is there any discussion? I know that there's, there's a person here that signed up to speak about this issue, and I'm going to go ahead, we're going to go ahead and vote, but I'm going to let her speak, since we're talking about this item right after we're done voting, rather than wait till the end for public comment. I just think it makes more sense for, if there's an issue that's on the agenda, someone wants to talk about that issue, that it should be talked about during that issue. Should they speak before? Do you want to speak before? Well, we'll go ahead and speak, we'll go ahead and speak before we take the actual vote, so. Denise Hammond? We have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Denise Hammond. I live at 21 Grandview Drive. And so, what I'm going to say is, I live next door to where this gentleman has pot-bellied pigs, and he doesn't have one. He has three great big ones that I know of, five baby ones that I see, and two other, I guess you can say, like, dog kennels that he has tarps over, that you hear them squealing. Well, just yesterday, being 70 degrees, you could smell it. And I welcome any of you all to come to my house when it's 80 degrees outside, and we'll have a cookout. You can't be outside. You can't open the windows. You can't enjoy my backyard. The flies were horrible last year, from October until it got cold. We set fly traps. I had to bomb my house every week to kill flies. And it's just my husband and I. We have no children, no pets. I said, "This is disgusting, and what I just heard from you all, I'm getting very upset, because there's nothing going to be done. Nothing at all that I can see that the council can do or the mayor can do because of an ordinance." But I can remember when there was an ordinance, because I had chickens, and I called to ask how many I could have, and they said, "No more than six." And I went by that ordinance until I got rid of my chickens two years ago, because we got tired of dealing with them. Because a coon would get them, and one would die, and I just got tired of it. But I don't know. I want something done if I have to go to an attorney. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And as a, if you could say, just stay there just for a second. Even if we pass this ordinance, it probably won't address your situation, as we talked about earlier, because it's a grandfathered in. Although, and I mentioned this to the city attorney, that maybe you could talk to him briefly, if there's any other options or any other state issues or something else that may be able to help you, if that may be the case. But in the end, if we do change this ordinance, we're talking about the future and not about the current situation, just so you know.
Yeah, but what about living next to a pig pen? You know, would you all want it? I'm asking you all. How many of you all would want to live there? I don't want to sell my property. I've been there 20, 29 years.
My question is, couldn't the Health Department intervene and do something about this?
I'm thinking about calling the EPA, the Indiana Department. EPA something. I'm trying to do something. I mean, this is horrible, that I have to live there. I mean, they don't care. They don't go outside, but to feed the animals.
It sounds like a health hazard to me, you living next door to a hog pen, and-
I might call the Health Department.
Call the Health Department, and maybe they can intervene and at least make them do something about it.
The Health Department has been out there. Get in touch with, wasn't April Green that you talked to, the Animal Control?
Yes.
Yeah.
She's taken pictures and everything. I've even let her in my backyard to take pictures and everything. I mean, I've worked with I don't know how many people. I've worked with so many people to get this taken care of.
Get back in touch with her and see where things stand with the Health Department, because I know-
Okay.
I called her after I got the call from the developer saying something's got to get done.
Okay.
And so, and I know, and she was keeping me abreast of everything, and I do know, because I'm the one who called the Health Department to see if there's anything that can be done, and they met her out there.
Okay.
So, get back in touch with her and see kind of where things stand.
Okay. I'll give April a call tomorrow, and we'll get this going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a motion of second on the floor to table on items number nine and 10. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those items are tabled. New business, Wes Merkley, an ordinance to changing the zoning map.
This is a application or a petition to rezone a certain property out of 4721 New Chapel Road, on the Gobra Parkway development. They've actually acquired an additional parcel, and they're bringing that parcel into the PUD that is already in existence out there for the Bridgeport Commons development. This comes to you from the Planning Commission with a favorable recommendation. I think there is a, there is a representative here from the applicant, Brendan Denton. And if you have any questions, but again, all that is out there is already zoned or in a PUD. They have acquired, if you go out there, there was a house that was sitting there for a long time. The house is down now. I believe they've acquired that property, and now they're putting that into this.
Was it the last one?
Yes.
And this did pass unanimously in Planning and Zoning, because it was just recently acquired, so it's kind of like this last little piece that-
It's rolled by every day?
-come by and-
Is it required a public hearing?
Yes. It's like it's, it's .25 acres.
2019 OR 1.
Well, open the floor to the public, for a public hearing to discuss this issue, and I know there's somebody who wants to talk about it, because they signed up for public comment.
Yeah, I think she probably asked Mr.-
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm with the engineering company, Heritage Engineering. I'm Camille Hassan. If you have any questions in the office, I can answer.
Can you give your address?
It's 603 North Shore Drive in Jeffersonville.
Okay, yeah. Does anybody else would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, we're going to close the public comment.
I'll go ahead and listen, if there's any questions. I'll go ahead and make the motion to pass 2019 OR 1. Like I said, this is just recently, last track that was recently required, acquired, and it just fits right in with the development.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Next up, item number 12, Heather Nedkaff, a resolution of authorizing the investment of public funds.
This has been done in the past. Usually, it's a two-year resolution, but they've changed the law, and now they have to do it every year. So, it's to allow us to use depositories that's on the state list.
Resolution number one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes. Heather, you're still there.
All right. We have lots of transfers here tonight. The first section is all for the performance increase pools for the directors. The ones that are not included in here, we're taking care of in the budget. The next ones that are on page one here also are with the Parks Department. We went through extensively the entire budget for the parks to make sure everything's in line where it needs to be, because during the budget, it's June, July, August, and it's real hard to try and figure out what the whole budget is, so we basically took everything that was spent last year and moved it around where it needed to be. So, these are the transfers that are recommended by Paul. On the next page, the next two sections are to deal with the directive from State Department of Accounts for the restricted funds, and I sent out an email regarding that. And then the next section is for sanitation workers, and as your request to bring them to equity for the refuse workers and the CL drivers.
Yeah, as you all recall, we had a workshop on that, and I met with Heather, and Heather was out and met with Stephanie and Clark and all of them, and then I followed up with them and to find it in their budget, which they did, it's coming out of their vehicles, that $93,609 that you see, so that'll bring everybody up. I'm glad to see that's finally getting done.
Yes.
Heather, just a question.
Yes.
Regarding the bottom section on the first page, the Edit, Edit-
Yes.
Taking dollars out of, you know, equipment and furniture and improvements, and moving it, basically transferring it all to the 209 fund. Are all those, I'll say those are kind of capital-type expenditures. Are they, are they going to go for similar, or are they just going for operations?
They are going, well, those types of capital items are operating-type equipment that they normally buy every year. In the long run, as it all works itself out, if you look at the additional appropriation list, there's a reduction in the 209 fund, because the total transfer going to 209, they didn't need as much of a budget in there, which lowers the transfer that's needed to come out of 204, which is able to sustain the amount that they actually need.
Okay, let me rephrase. We were, it planned on, or we were given a budget that said we need to buy some equipment.
Right.
And it's coming out of Edit. We had at least $30,000 right there, out of two line items, the green space and the Parks equipment. And then, we're shifting all that money over to the 209 fund. Did, did, are those dollars going to pay for entertainment? That's what I mean, that's what I mean by operation types. I don't-
What's the 209?
It's the, it's the activity fund.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Because, yeah, because I mean, I just, because it seems like we always, are always in need of purchasing new equipment, and we're going to not zero out, but we're going to reduce the equipment, and then we're going to probably put it towards entertainment. I don't know if we are, but for my point, and I'm just-
It's, it's-
What you're reducing, am I correct, you're reducing the 209 fund up there by 68.6?
Right. In the long run, the 204, if I can get it all, 204 is the operating for Parks. So, there were expenses that were paid out of Edit dollars for some of the things that should have been paid out of the 204 for operating. To get those, which was a lot of maintenance, utilities, and things, to bring 204 where it needs to be, it lowered the amount of the transfer that was going to go towards 209. So, that, that's the reason why we had to increase the transfer from Edit, so that those operating can go that way.
Another question.
I have a, I have a large list of where all the transfers came from, so if you wanted to see the details of it all.
Another question regarding the Edit, because, you know, we were, in years past, we were somewhat hesitant to pay for some, I'll call it operations, but out of Edit. And if we're going to wipe out the equipment out of Edit, but then we're going to transfer the money into the 209 fund, and then reduce the 209 fund later, why don't we just eliminate them, these out of Edit? And then the money stays in Edit in case we have to buy big-ticket items later? Because once we transfer it to 209 fund, it can be spent for entertainment or anything. I mean, not anything, but, you know, in parks, they can spend it. But this is an opportunity to keep the money in Edit and just not spend it, because we're going to reduce it later. We're going to transfer it to a fund, and then we're going to reduce the appropriation in that fund, but the 209 fund gets to keep the Edit dollars. Am I saying that correctly, or you understand?
The transfer that's going to 209 is going to be used by operating of the normal activities that they do. So, all of the revenues are budgeted in the same way. I think that maybe what, I think that if you took a look at this spreadsheet that I've got, it might help you with some of your questions.
Well, some of these questions were posed to Director Northam at the Parks Authority meeting, and he was asked to come to this council meeting to kind of explain some of that for us.
I wasn't aware, so.
Specifically said that it would be a good idea for him to come and explain this to the council, because I didn't understand it at the Parks meeting when he presented it to us.
Do you, would you like me to send the entire spreadsheet to the full council, so you can see where we're, because basically, we looked at what was spent, and- you can see where we're, because basically, we, we looked at what was spent in, in the whole year of last year, what it should be of the budget, and where does it need to be increased, and where does it need to be decreased?
And I think...
So I think the spreadsheet might help you out.
Yeah, because one of my concerns, being a member of the Parks Authority, is lack of restraint in spending at the Parks Department in all of the areas, not just activities, but also in equipment purchases and everything, so I think that, uh, uh, we need to take a real good look at especially transferring money from one line item to another, when, when you, if you put it in the Parks Authority where they can just run wild and spend it, I can guarantee you it'll be spent.
Well, it's a fair fight, not to put it in the Parks Authority, but to put it in the 209, I don't want to confuse the public.
But the, I mean, if you look at this transfer ordinance, we're pulling $68,000 out of Fund 209 to go into things like utilities, and then putting $37,000 back into 209, it just seems like we're shifting money from edit to pay for utilities, and that's not appropriate. Um, and it, to say that we weren't aware during the budget time, I don't think is also appropriate, because we have years of, of data to look at what the budget should be for utilities. Uh, the only wrench that could be possibly, that, that could have been thrown into this mix, that could possibly explain this, is that we're taking more from redevelopment, um, as far as maintenance goes and servicing goes, but I think even that, we should have had a better idea of, of what our expenses were going to be when we did the budget, so I think, I think that we definitely need to go through the...
Sure.
Detail, the, the spreadsheets in greater detail...
Sure.
Before we move this forward.
I just know that from the finance portion of it, I can't speak for how it's being spent in the department, that's not part of what I can do.
No, I understand, that's why...
But I just, I know that at the end of the year, there, there seems to always be a lot of transfers that happen to get bills paid.
Right.
And they're all within category and things, but it's like every time we get a bill, and then we have to do another transfer, so it was thought, well, let's look at how much we actually spent, where the money needs to be, and go from there, but I do agree that, I think that you all need to have a little bit more information before the next meeting.
Just pass on first reading, and more information, if I can...
I'm okay with that, if everybody else is, but I...
Well, we need to make sure Paul needs to be here, or I'm voting against it.
I would rather see it tabled until the next meeting.
Do you want me to just pull the parks out of those, and, and have...
If you just did that, instead of papering the whole ordinance out there?
Yeah. I think that'd be better.
I support that.
So next time I'll have two, two separate ordinances?
Yeah.
So...
If you could just amend this one to remove any transfers to the parks.
To the parks. So I'll make a motion to amend 2019 OR2, to remove any parks transfers.
Second. Sir, do you want a first and second or first reading?
Um, do I have to, motion to amend it, and then motion to...
Yeah, so you amend, then you need a second, and you vote on the motion to amend, and then you'll vote on the floor, and then the...
Okay. So I think there's a motion and a second to amend, removing the, the parks and edit items, or just parks items?
Just the, the parks.
The parks.
I, I would do the whole, the whole thing.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's been amended.
Make a motion to approve 190R2 on the first and second as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve on the first and second reading for 2019 OR number two. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Okay.
And I think you're through.
Yep, the additional appropriation, the three, uh, first ones there have to do with all of the transfers that were also discussed earlier for parks.
So those will have to be, this one need, need to be amended?
I can, separate it if you'd like, for the next meeting. And then, um, the edit transfer out for Public Arts is, uh, chewing up the number for the 4% um, transfer that goes out to the Public Arts. Uh, the transfer out from Parks for Chapel Lake Park, uh, is the 200,000 that I believe you all discussed late December, hopefully, you all remember that, yep. Um, the next two for the Chapel Lake Park is to appropriate the cash that, uh, is going to be in there with that 200,000 transfer, and there's a little bit of extra cash in there that's not appropriated, and then also the sidewalk construction fund is appropriating cash. So it's not new money, it's... But I can separate these also.
I can make a motion to amend this and remove the park activity and the edit, the top one, two, three, four, no, three, not three.
Just three, yeah.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's been amended.
Motion to approve the, the ordinance 2019 OR3 as amended, second.
Does that take three readings also, so it's first and second?
Yeah, so that, that I'm trying to have a public hearing next week, Tom.
First and second, fine. So we have a, a motion and a second to pass on the first and second reading. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Passes. Next up, the council board appointments, and I don't have a list of what's left, uh...
Yeah, so you should have there in your, in your bag.
Which ones are highlighted? Okay. So I guess first up is the building authority, is that right?
Yes, uh, I'd like to, there was...
Sorry, I just said, I forgot about, trying to even look for somebody.
Oh, uh, for the billing authority, I'd like to nominate Richard Eklund, he goes to all those meetings, and actually, I think Larry made the suggestion to him, and so I, well, if you go, go to all those meetings, you're fine with it.
I'll say that. We have a motion, second, to, uh, appoint Richard Eklund to building authority, any other discussion? I have, I have one question, um, it's highlighted here, Brandon Westerfield, is he going to be the one removed?
Yes.
Okay.
He has his work scheduled.
Great, great, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations, Richard. I'm glad to see you on a board, rather than just be in the audience.
Congratulations, and our condolences.
Um, and I, I don't see any more highlighted, but I know you do...
Arts, you need to arts.
Oh, yep.
You said you had, uh...
Yep, I, uh, Arts does have a person, Alonzo Richmond, um, he has a strong background in theater, he lives in the city of Jeffersonville, and actually, I have a little more information about him.
Who's he replacing?
He's a co-owner of Redline Performing Art Company, which has a mission of bringing the love of theater to underserved areas. He lives on Ewing Lane, I don't know if any of y'all know him.
What was his name?
Alonzo, Alonzo Richmond.
Oh, Richmond.
Yep, Richmond, yep, 538 Ewing Lane, lives here in Jeff, and he's got a theater background, performing arts background.
A motion for Alonzo Richmond.
Al, A.L.
I want to get it right.
Oh, yeah, A.L.O.N.Z.O.
Uh-huh.
Richmond, R.E.C.H.M.O.N.D.
Thank you, sir.
Second. We have a motion, second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And then we have, well, if we meet, I'm, with the Finance Committee, the President.
Oh, Finance Committee. Yeah, I think it's good to have a body available, um, to discuss some financial issues, it's a public meeting if we meet, and the council and public are, 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 are welcome to attend, and I know that there's been a couple people, strange people in the past that, um, are willing to serve again, and that's, I think, Nathan, is that correct?
I'm willing.
Ron Ellis, you willing?
I'm willing.
Lisa Gill, you willing?
Yeah.
Is there anyone else who wants to be on the board? Speak up now, or forever hold your peace?
I'm willing.
All right, well, that, that will make up the Finance Committee whenever we, whenever we do meet. I don't think there's any other board members, are there, in Congress?
No, I'm saying...
Okay. And Mr. Wilder's not here, he texted me in advance, he's working on a case, uh, department heads, any department heads who want to speak? No, no more public comment, council comments, Mr. Maples?
Just thank all the city workers for the cold temperatures, being out working, uh, services did not, uh, stop at all, uh, so commend all our city workers that worked out the weather during this, uh, rather low temperature now, 59 degrees, three days later.
Uh, Ms. Gill?
I echo the councilperson Maples, uh, I mean, they were, they were out here all night long, and all day long, in that bitter cold, and I also want to thank Chief Hedrick, he even called and offered up their, all their firehouses for any one of the city worker street sanitation to go in and get warm and have coffee, so it's really, the, the whole city really pulled together, uh, for those that had to work out in those conditions. Also, I just wanted to, uh, bring to your attention that J&amp;LA on February 23rd, it's a Saturday from 8:45 to 12:30, we're having a health and wellness seminar, we're going to have speakers there from Jeff Police Department, Clark County Sheriff's Department, and also Dr. Gazel, and, um, the Health Department, there will be an archon training and all that, if, uh, any council members wish to attend. It's going to be at Park Memorial Church, in their gym. You register beforehand, but all you have to do is just let me know, and I'll make sure that you get your registrations, or I'll send it out. That's all I have.
Mr. Hawkins?
I have nothing.
Mr. Owen?
I'm good.
Mr. Ellis?
No comment.
Mr. Samuel? Two things, I appreciate the discussion we had on the edit and the parks, you know, part of our responsibility is fiscal, and, um, you know, the intent, in my mind, my intent was not to start using edit dollars to start funding our, our parks, other than, um, I, I call them capital, but the, uh, equipment-type purchases are bigger purchases, and I just think that's a, was a good discussion, I appreciate that. Second thing is, which you, you already said it, but I appreciate, uh, finally, Richard getting on a board, he goes to, I think, almost every meeting, and, um, now we can go to Richard and, and encourage him to speak up on an issue, so, uh, I, I think we'll be well-served by Richard.
Thank you. Uh, I just have two quick things, next meeting is going to be on Tuesday, I believe, because of the holiday, just want to make everybody aware of that, and then I think there's a workshop also that same day, I don't, I don't have, I don't know what the top, topic is, or what time it is, so...
The five, wasn't it 5:30?
I got six now.
Oh, six, yes, it was six, it's with Purdue University, it's at, um, they want to talk to us about how they can help the workforce now.
So the next meeting is Tuesday, uh, what, what's the date?
19th.
The 19th, at, and first of all, we're going to have a workshop ahead of time at 6:00 PM. I'll be here. He's the, he's the president of the Merchants Association, big business downtown. That's, that's all, I think that's all we got, is, uh, motion to adjourn.